Business item number eight. Fire alarm system upgrade. The report is not ready, so we'll remove that from the agenda this evening. And we'd like to move item. General Functions, number six. To. Immediately after the consent agenda.
Oh, okay, I'd like to make a motion that we remove item number eight from business and financial procedures. And that. Item number six be placed after the consent agenda under General Functions.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we need a motion to approve the agenda, I guess.
Oh, okay, now make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Special presentat- oh, actually. Pledge of Allegiance. So we have students from Thomas Edison Elementary School to lead us in the pledge. Moving fast tonight. All right, thanks. And now we have a special presentation by the Thomas Edison SF Opera Aria Program. And we have Mr. Paul Delanda, teacher at Thomas Edison Elementary School, to present.
Yeah, I will. I'll start. And I'm Riza Bell, principal of Thomas Edison. And I am really proud to be here today to have my wonderful teacher, Mr. Delanda, present the Aria Opera Program. He's instrumental in this program continuing at Thomas Edison and being such a great program.
So, good evening, board members and superintendent Vidalis, everybody. My name is Alex Delanda. In the records, it's Paul, that's my legal name, but everyone knows me as Alex, everyone's, what, Paul? But anyway, I teach sixth grade at Thomas Edison. For the last three years, we'll be talking about the SF Opera Aria Program that we've been collaborating with for the last three years at the school. It's a wonderful program. I have a few points that I'll be talking about. Try not to talk too long, but there's so much to say about it. After that, we have a short clip queued up from our opera last year. And after that, we have some students who are going to speak about the program. So the, this is the third year that the SF Opera has collaborated with us at Thomas Edison. It's the Aria Program, it's called the Arts Resources in Action. It is mainly funded by private donors to the SF Opera Ed Department. However, we are also granted a scholarship that we apply for. Ruth Knott and Joey Castaneda are both instrumental in bringing this program to us. We're the only school in Daly City and, from my knowledge, the only school on the peninsula to participate in this program. It's a year-long program where the children study, it's a comprehensive study of opera as an art form. We have a teaching assistant from the SF Opera, who is Mrs. Lisa Giglio. She has a PhD in theater. And also Mr. Aaron Pike, who has a degree in composition. So these are professionals who are working with our students. The children are able to study so many different things. And it's multifaceted and there's different, there's so many different things that the kids study. Some of those things I have down are choral singing, drama, acting, public speaking, production and stage design. At the end of the year, we do a culminating event, which is the presentation of mini operas each class. We have six classes, close to 200 students. They perform six mini operas. Each mini opera is an original composition with original arias, and they are the students' creations. A couple of things that I think is important to the program and that is important not just to myself, but to the students and staff and the community, are the collaboration, is the collaboration. The collaboration of the program is essential in making it work. We have teachers working with students, obviously, but we also have SF Opera staff, who I mentioned earlier. And this year, we even have a board member, Mrs. Marie Brizuela, who has been coming in nearly daily for the last few weeks to work with the kids on costume design. Even, some of our students came in earlier and said, oh, there's Mrs. Brizuela. It's interesting to see them outside of the context of working on costumes. So, also inclusion. All students participate, every single student. Again, like I said, we have close to 200 students participating. This is not a volunteer program or a play. This is a year-long program where every single student participates. The ownership, the ownership of the operas is incredible. To see the children take pride in their creations, standing on stage and performing their original compositions is really, really breathtaking. The higher-order thinking. Our district, the initiatives of rolling out Common Core state standards, also implementing higher-order thinking, more rigor in the classroom, Level Four strategic learning, all that stuff, I witnessed it 100% in this opera program, from top to bottom. And also student engagement. It goes without saying that student engagement is one of the most important things in education, that the students have to love what they are learning about to take part in it. Empathy and understanding, developing empathy and understanding. Opera is a complete art form and expression of culture. And a lot of times, we think of opera as being a higher-order, a higher-level art form for, only reserved for a specific class of people. And that's not the case at all. And it's wonderful to see children realize that, that they belong to this program, that the SF Opera House is theirs. The study of opera encompasses music, theater, dance, design, literature, history, social movement, all in one sweep. Most of the critical reasons to have the arts present in our schools is to give children the opportunity to see the world through the eyes of others. And studying opera gives children a wonderful chance to recognize beauty and emotion in times and cultures that are not their own. And that's a powerful way to build empathy and appreciation for others. Those are a few things that I've noticed and other teachers who are participating have noticed. So I think what we can do is probably go to the clip before I keep going with this, so I have enough time for the students to share their own thoughts and feelings about the program. This is a clip from last year's opera on ancient Egypt, which is a social studies, part of our unit, social studies unit in the sixth grade. Oh, that's okay. Five, four, three, two, one. Last song.
Egypt is in ruins. What shall we do? Leo, Patrick, help us through. Please help us through. Buildings are crumbling, falling apart. The people are stumbling, their brains are hard. Egypt, Egypt, Egypt. Don't let the kingdom fall. Egypt, Egypt, Egypt. One can save us all. We hear the gods crumbling. The pyramids tumbling. We have to find a way. Have to find a way, 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 have to find a way. We have to find a way.
So, right now, I hope we have enough time to include some of the students. Observations, what they've felt and thought about the program, what they learned in the program.
Hi, I'm Austin DeGon, and I've been, I go to Thomas Edison. And I've been in the opera program for two years. And what I like about opera is that you get to share all of your thoughts and ideas to everyone in the opera that's helping you. And I learned that in the opera, you could collaborate with everybody and everyone doesn't leave you out.
That's good.
Hi, my desert, I'm Desiree Canales, and I'm in sixth grade. I've been in the opera program for two years, and one thing I love about the opera program is how imaginative you can be for your opera that fits well. And one thing I have learned since doing this opera program is learning how to make different songs, costumes, and props for your whole school to enjoy.
Hello, my name is Faith Nicom, and I'm a sixth grader at Thomas Edison. What I love about this opera program is that when you have little items, you can create many big things in your opera. I have also learned how to conquer my stage fight in front of others.
Hi, my name is Ariane Delos Santos, and I'm a sixth grader at Thomas Edison. I've been in the opera program for two years now, and I just love that you can express yourself by singing, acting, or even just set-building during opera. I also really love that your creativity can just flow out during opera while making arias, choreography, and costumes. Throughout the opera program, I have learned how to have confidence in myself while speaking in public.
To our honorable city manager, council members, school principals, teachers, parents, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bander Reyes, and I'm here to talk about opera. I've been in the opera program for two years, and what I like about opera is how we could all show our creativity by creating a play or opera. What I also like about opera is how fun it is to actually make a song from our own, from scratch, and create opera sets. I've also liked how, I've also learned how I could mix colors together from the color wheel to get perfect colors for our opera set.
So, as you can, as you can tell, those were responses coming directly from the students. And again, it's a wonderful program. And again, I'd like to thank the students for coming out to share and speak. I think in conclusion, as we can all see, the, one of the things that is the most important is to develop the confidence to speak and to also take pride in your own words. And I think we just witnessed some of that right now. So, that's it, I guess. Okay, thank you very much.
And before they leave, we will be giving them certificates, and we'd like to talk to them as well.
I just wanted to commend this great program. I think it's wonderful that we have the arts in our schools. I know I've said it before, but that was a very impressive footage. I love what I heard tonight, where the pieces were original, it involved each of the students' creativity. And to hear that 200 students are involved and this program is going to continue to thrive, based on everyone being innovative. It's just absolutely amazing, because it's important that our students, you know, expand their cultural antenna. And this is one of the programs that it's obvious, it's very evident, that is doing it. I think it's a great program to connect with, maybe with the Samatero Get Healthy Initiative. I mean, you're doing everything. They're moving healthy, free expression in a safe space. So, thank you very much for joining us this evening, and hats off to all of you. Excellent work.
One more thing, I do have DVDs of the production for all of you that are on seven. That's last year's production. Also, not to throw in, our next opera is a week from now. A plug, a plug. This year's culminating event is a week from now, May 20th. Everyone is invited. Everyone is invited. We have, again, six operas that the students have been working on all year. Five o'clock, Thomas Edison Multi-Use Room.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, I want to take an opportunity to say to the students how proud I am of all of you, and I got to see behind the scenes, being at the school quite often. And you guys are wonderful. And what is really nice is they do write the lyrics themselves. And it's, it's just amazing how they make that all work. And I'm very proud of you all working together as a team, because that's really important. And also that there are some students that maybe don't feel comfortable to sing or to do different things, but those are the guys that, there's a job for everybody. There's a position for, I was there and I was during a rehearsal, and there's somebody that's, am I saying correctly, stage manager? Is that what you guys call it? And it's like, none of you go do anything on stage or move anything unless the stage manager tells you. How nice that is that they're all working together and each has their job to do, which makes everything complete. Because no matter what, nobody can do an opera all by themselves. So it takes everybody as a team. So congratulations, students, and I will see you, well, tomorrow again. I'm just really proud of them. And I was there last year, and I saw you guys, and it was a fabulous, fabulous performance. And thank you for, Alex, I didn't know, I was wondering why I got confused. But anyway, thank you for taking this on too, because they're very proud of you as well.
They're wonderful, they're wonderful. One more plug, one more thing, and then I promise I'm done.
Take your time.
I, to the principals in the room, we are also hosting a principal invite before our opera at four o'clock at, in the Thomas Edison Library. Four o'clock, four to five o'clock, we're inviting all the principals in the district. And we've invited the SF Opera Ed Department, also teachers in the room. If you're interested to become a lead teacher in this program, you're welcome to come. Four to five o'clock in the Thomas Edison Library. The SF Opera Ed Department will be talking about the program, recruiting more Daly City schools. So, you're all welcome to attend, and that's right before the opera Wednesday night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, thanks once again, Mr. Delanda, and I'm really happy to see that SF Opera is working with our school. And I like the fact that the students really recognize how they're collaborating with each other and working together. It seems like they had a lot of fun while learning at the same time. And we have certificates, so I'll give.
I'd like to present a certificate of appreciation to Faith, and I want Faith, welcome. Could you correct me, please? A certificate of appreciation goes to Austin DeGon.
Okay. Certificate of appreciation for Godfrey Yanis. Did I say that correctly? And another certificate of appreciation for Carl John Yanis. Not me. Okay, Desiree Jane Canales.
Ariane May Delos Santos. Bander Reyes.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Thomas Edison. We look forward to attending next Thursday, I believe, no, next Wednesday. I will try to be there during your dress rehearsal during the day, so, thank you.
One more time. All right. So next, we have communications and persons wishing to address the board. We have several cards, but I just want to remind the community members that anything that has to do with the negotiations will be calling your card towards the end of the meeting. So for right now, we only have one, which is Stephanie Settlemeyer.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Christina Navas, I'm speaking on behalf of Stephanie and the rest of the speech pathology department in our district. And we are here tonight to voice our concern about the pay for speech pathologists in our district. We feel our salary does not reflect the amount of education or work that we do. And our district's speech pathologist completed three years of coursework to earn a master's degree. And we hold a credential with a certificate of clinical competence and a license from the Speech Pathology and Audiology Board of California. In terms of work responsibilities and our duties, some of our job responsibilities include being available before and after school to hold individualized education plan meetings. We have to administer comprehensive assessments, write reports on these assessments, provide speech therapy for a range of disabilities, collaborate with teachers, provide at-risk intervention, and manage a caseload of 55 or more students, and go from school to school. I work at Susan B. Anthony School and M.P. Brown, and, you know, all of that travel is part of our day. Our salaries are not competitive with our neighboring districts. There is a significant difference between our starting salary and the salaries of San Francisco Unified and South San Francisco Unified School District. A first-year speech pathologist at San Francisco Unified and South San Francisco Unified makes $17,000 more than we do. So, if you guys want to break that down, our neighboring district salaries are based on 185 to 191 workdays, that's what they work. We here in our district work 193 days, and we are making less. In order for a speech pathologist to earn the same amount as a first-year employee in our neighboring school districts, we'd have to work eight years at JESD. If our district offered a more competitive salary for a speech pathologist, we can interest first-year graduate students and speech pathologists to be district employees versus the alternative, which is hiring contracted speech pathologists, which costs our district over $100,000 per therapist. The contract employees come and go, resulting in high turnover. And our special education students, our department, our school district, really needs the continuity and continued support from people who want to be here. And we feel that pay is a big part of that. The senior district pathologists in our district are retiring, and our department needs to establish a solid foundation for district speech pathologists who are willing to serve for many years and provide our students with quality speech therapy. As employees, we desire longevity in our schools, but we also need livable wages. And in closing, we hope that you will consider this in your budget planning for next year. And we thank you for letting us speak. And we hope that we have the support of the community, the schools, the principals, the administration, and you as the board when considering that. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Administrator comments? No.
Oh, I just want to say it was a pleasure last week to attend the Student of the Year Award. And the keynote speaker was very uplifting and encouraging for, I think, many students. And I hope a lot of people brought that home with them and saw how wonderful kids with disabilities can do as well in the future, and that it wouldn't be considered a disability, it's just a difference.
I do want to thank Thomas Edison students and staff, and look forward to seeing the opera. And also talking about arts, last night was the district art fair at Policita School. And I want to thank the students and staff for their presentations that night and for all the artwork that was displayed.
All right. Board member acknowledgements and commendations, starting here.
Excuse me. Thank you again for the presentation. I'm looking forward to coming next week to witness the great work that's happening there. I do want to say thank you for the comments that we received, and then that is what we're here for, is to receive the comments and make the best decisions that we can as community members and as representatives for all of you. So thank you for sharing. I do want to say that I too have really appreciated and enjoyed last week's Student of the Year. I think those are one of the wonderful things that we get to celebrate, the accomplishments of our students and the families and the teachers, all of the shoulders that are holding up the great work that makes the wheels continue to turn. It was wonderful to hear how inspiring the keynote's speech was. I mean, and he also spoke of his own disability. And I, being a parent of a child with the, you know, learning differences and disabilities, I can totally relate. But he definitely inspired everyone in the room. And it was a testament to not just his family, but to the great work and the community that he is part of in the schools here in Daly City. And I'm honored to be able to serve in that capacity and be a part of this family of educators. And on that note, I do want to say that, I do want to also just share that we, as a, as a community member, I also serve on the commission status of women, and North County is barely represented. represented there. Friday is the last day to submit. There are a lot of women in the room this evening, and the reason why I bring it up is because this commission serves the families of San Mateo County. It does not just serve just the women in our community, but it serves the families. So there are five vacancies, and if you are interested in applying and being part of this commission, it's a great commission, and it'd be wonderful to represent our community and our family here in Daly City. So let me know. Thank you very much.
Ms. Mizola.
I also attended the Student of the Year program, and we did have, from Tobias School, our strings were a group that plays together, and they were very good. And I also agree with what Flo said about the guest speaker was fantastic. I was so proud of him. And also, I attended the Arts Fair at GRP, and it was great. It was twice as large as it was last year, and we had entertainment that was just fantastic. Dancers from M. Pauline Brown. We had a little skit program that some of the students put together. And we also had, what else was the entertainment? Yeah, oh yeah, the violin group from Woodrow Wilson. They were absolutely fantastic. And then we had another dance group. Oh yeah, the poet, poet. And, you know, that takes a lot for some of our students to get up and to perform. Sometimes it's easier when you perform in a group, you sort of have your buddies with you. But when you stand up by yourself, that's tremendous. And the poet did stand by herself, and I was very proud of that. And then also, we did have a book sale in Daly City to raise money for the libraries, and many of our students came into the book sale because they all entered in an art contest. And some of the winners were there, and they were presented with the awards. So we like working the libraries with our schools as well. And then one last thing I would like to remind everybody, the PTA council is going to hold their award ceremony. It'll be held on the 19th, and it will be done at the Bromwell Community Center. So all the schools, we hope that the PTA officers will attend, the principals, our superintendent, and everyone else that cares about supporting PTA, and honoring those people that have done so much for our schools.
All right, great.
That's it.
Thanks. I would like to acknowledge again all the Students of the Year and all the parents that brought their children there that day. Also, I'd like to acknowledge, and maybe Mr. Vidalis can help me out with the teacher's name, but Westlake Elementary School received laptops from Google and from Khan Academy. Do you know the name of the teacher?
The teacher that spearheaded the project is Ms. McPentagon.
All right. So I'd like to commend her and the rest of the school. And all the students, they actually had to go and log a bunch of hours in order to compete to win the laptops. So our schools won. Also, I did school visits with Mr. Vidalis at Thomas Edison. So I actually got to see the students rehearsing their opera. I saw students that were doing dance. We also got to see a lot of students who are working on elaborate math word problems, gardening, architecture, reading and writing, of course. And I got to also see physical education with the younger students, which is really important as well. So I want to commend all the teachers who are putting in hard work at the schools. And I guess, oh, yeah, that's it. And I also want to just remind everyone that as much as we would like you to stay, the students are, you know, able to leave and go home and get their homework done, study and whatever they need to do. Correspondents?
I don't have any correspondence, but I too have an announcement. Next Thursday will be open house across our district schools. It's another opportunity to see the wonderful work that students have done this year and see the art projects that will be displayed. So if you're interested in seeing more, please plan on attending one of our, or more of our open houses. Generally, they're scheduled between 5:30 and 7:00. So I believe I have given the board a schedule so you can see which school is most appropriate for you to visit. But parents that are out there, I'm sure you'll be there. Community members, you want to hear about our schools and see what we're doing. It's a great opportunity to come and observe.
All right.
Is there a reason why we didn't?
I don't want to discuss that right now. We're already in the meeting, so pass that on.
Okay. I never thought we ever did this before.
We could talk about it later. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Take it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute. One resolution, but it doesn't require.
Oh, that's right.
So Resolution Number 15-05-13.
Here, our special speaker, Mr. Kirch.
Oh.
We moved that over.
So, oh yeah, we put it there, sorry. All right. Item Number Six, Presentation on AB 2028 All-Male Ballot Pilot Project. Mark Church, Chief Elections Officer, and Assessor County Clerk Recorder, and Megan Hassel Shearer, Election Supervisor, will present.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to give you a brief presentation on AB 2028, which is our all-male ballot pilot program for San Mateo County. We're delighted to be here this evening to talk about this important program. It's a program that we're very excited about. So we're going to get the PowerPoint up here in a second, but what is AB 2028? Initially, the legislature enacted an all-male ballot pilot project for Yolo County, and AB 2028 is simply an expansion of that pilot project to include San Mateo County. And that became effective on January 1st of this year. And the purpose of including San Mateo County in the pilot is to allow for the collection of data from an urban county to complement the data from a rural county. And the idea is that the legislature will have a more complete picture of the effects of all-male ballot elections. San Mateo County was selected by the state legislature for this project because we are an urban and diverse county. We have experience with all-male ballot elections, and there is a growing trend towards voting by mail in our county. AB 2028 authorizes San Mateo County to conduct up to three elections entirely by mail until January 1, 2018. It only applies to local special elections and consolidated municipal, school, and special district elections. It does not apply to presidential elections. So we are targeting all-male elections for November 2015 and November 2017, local consolidated elections, and one other local special election, which has not yet been determined. So the requirements of AB 2028, every voter will get a ballot in the mail, even if the voter has not signed up to vote by mail. In this program, all return envelopes for the ballots will be postage prepaid, unlike our current vote-by-mail program. And although we call this an all-male ballot election, there will actually be a limited number of polling places throughout the county. The law calls for at least one polling place in each city of the county, so voters can still vote in person at the polls if they want. Like Yolo County, San Mateo County will report back to the state legislature and the Secretary of State on such factors as voter turnout, election costs, and demographic information, and provide a comparison with prior elections run in the traditional format. The potential benefits are significant. We have found that elections conducted strictly by mail can lead to an increase in voter participation and cost savings. In May of 2011, as authorized by our county charter, we conducted a countywide all-male special election to fill a vacancy on the Board of Supervisors, including three local school district measures. The turnout in that election was 26%. In contrast, a special countywide standalone traditional election was held in April of 97 to fill a vacancy on the Board of Supervisors, and the turnout in that election was 15.6%. So the turnout of the countywide all-male election was 10% higher than the traditional, excuse me, traditional election. And the cost is also substantially less, about one-third to one-half the cost of a traditional election. For our county in a traditional election, we hire and train some 1,700 precinct workers, we deploy and test over 1,400 voting machines, and we secure some 209 polling places. All these costs will be eliminated under this program. For the Jefferson Elementary School District, the cost of the 2013 local consolidated election was about $56,000. Based on that amount, the district should save somewhere between $18,000 to $28,000 with an all-male ballot election this November. All-male ballot elections also reduce the risk of human error that come with employing a large number of poll workers. Problems will be more efficiently handled with a significantly smaller, more experienced, and better-trained and managed election staff. Most of the election day issues, ranging from technological difficulties with voting machines to poll workers not showing up, will be eliminated. And another advantage of all-male ballot elections is faster results on election night. With no precinct ballots, a much greater portion of the ballots will be tallied soon after the closing of the polls at 8:00 p.m. So who votes by mail now? This chart shows a breakdown of registered voters by age group in the county, and the dark green represents the number of voters who have signed up to vote by mail permanently, and the light green represents one-time vote-by-mail voters and polling place voters. And this chart shows a breakdown of permanent vote-by-mail voters by party preference in the Jefferson Elementary School District. And as you can see, there is not much difference between the two major parties. And this chart shows a breakdown of permanent vote-by-mail voters by city. Over the years, election turnout trends have shifted in the all-male ballot direction. About 57% of our voters countywide and 56% of voters in Daly City already prefer to vote by mail, and they signed up to vote by mail permanently. So more and more people are becoming familiar with voting by mail, and it continues to grow in popularity, simply because it is convenient. So this chart shows a breakdown by city of how voters cast ballots in the November local 2013 consolidated election. And the breakdown shows the percentage of voters who cast their ballots by mail, including both permanent and one-time voters, and those who cast their ballots at the polls. Do we see the next chart? I think we have a problem. Yeah, this is, yeah. Okay, so let's go to the next chart. Okay, so it's not showing it. So we didn't get the, unfortunately, the current PowerPoint. So that, actually, that last chart, I'm not sure that was not the one that we had planned to show you. I apologize for that, but I will say.
We have it in our packet.
You have it. Okay, very good. So.
Let me just say what it is.
If you take a look at this last pie chart here, which we don't have for the audience, unfortunately, you can see in the Jefferson Elementary School District, 86% of the registered voters cast their ballots by mail, and only 14% cast their ballots at the polls in the November 2013 local consolidated election. And if we had had the other chart that I wanted to show you, you would see that you rank, this district ranks as one of the highest in the county in terms of people, voters, casting their ballots by mail at 86%. An incredibly high figure for such a large district. The only district that beat you was Holma. And so, you know, obviously, the people in the Jefferson School District, obviously, are already very familiar with this method of voting. They find it convenient, and they have embraced the idea. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Megan, who is going to cover the rest of the PowerPoint.
If you don't mind, I'll just speak from here to the PowerPoint. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the logistics of what an election day election would look like under this pilot project. As we already have, we're still going to do our ballot drop-off location. So every city clerk's office in the county, and our two offices at Forty Tower Road in San Mateo, and the county center will all still have a ballot drop-off beginning 28 days before the election. Now is that on election day, the city clerk's office won't be able to go home at 5:00 o'clock. Those have to stay open until 8:00 p.m. to allow ballots to be dropped off there. Voting centers are still going to be open in the AB 2028 pilot project. What this means is that beginning 29 days before the election, you'll be able to vote at both Forty Tower Road and at the Redwood City Office. With this, if you prefer to vote in person and on one of our east lakes, you'll still be able to do that at one of these locations during normal business hours and always the Saturday before the election. So election day voting is what changes. What we're now gearing towards is, under the law, is that we have to have one polling place per city. So that would be 20 polling places throughout the county. However, upon further study, we're looking into additional polling places in certain larger areas to accommodate our voters. What's great about these polling places is to say that, you know, someone who works in Daly City but lives in San Mateo, they'll now be able to vote at any one of our 20 polling places throughout the county and get the correct ballot.
See, that works.
This is much different than what it's been like in the past, where you had to go to one of the 209 polling places that was specific for you.
For you, yeah.
At any of these polling places, you'll also be able to receive a replacement ballot, drop off your ballot, and get help on your envelope or any questions that you may have. So what are we doing? A big part of what we need to do in the registrations office is to educate our voters that we're trying to be a part of this vote-by-mail project. The biggest thing that we've noticed is that when voters move within the county, they forget to re-register. So we need to make sure we have their correct address. So there's a big campaign and a big clutch to make sure everyone re registers, even if they've only moved across the hall or down the street. We believe in elections in the four times you have to tell somebody something for it to really be enforced. So once we know that this is what we're doing, we're going to start sending out postcards to let all of our voters know that this is the way they'll be voting. Then you'll have your sample ballot, which will tell you of the polling place locations throughout the county, and also that this is a vote-by-mail election. And then a couple further communications from our office to let you know that your official ballot is coming and that we want you to vote by mail. So what changes for the board is that in the past, we send letters to the district letting them know that the election is coming up, and we need to know what seats are available or if they're even having an election. To be a part of this, we now need a resolution okaying us to go forward with an all-male ballot election. Our county council, Glenn Levy, has. Our county council, Glenn Levy, has drafted up a resolution that I've given the board. And in it, it kind of describes all the benefits of this project and why we should all participate. In order for this project to be successful, we need the full participation of every district that's having an election in November. So right now, the deadline for the school district to tell us they're having an election is E minus one-twenty-five. This means that a hundred and twenty-five days before the election, you have to let us know which seats on the board are up for contest. And so it's around that time that we'd like to receive these resolutions. But the deadline to receive the resolution, our drop-dead date, is August seventh. So just a quick recap. We'll still have polling places throughout the county, except for now, the benefit is is I can vote at any one of these polling places if you wish. We'll have drop-off locations throughout the county. Our voting centers will be open for twenty-nine days before the election. And the brand-new law by the legislature will now go into effect, the postmarked plus-three-day law, which says that if you send in your ballot on election day, as long as it's postmarked on election day, it will still count if you receive it within three days. So before that, we had to receive your ballot by eight P.M. on election day. And now we can receive it by the Friday at five o'clock as long as it's postmarked. We saw the true benefit of this law this past week in the San Carlos School District election, where about seven-hundred-and-fifty ballots were postmarked on election day and we were able to count them for that school district.
I just want to emphasize one last point with Megan said, and that is that the success of this program depends on the participation of every jurisdiction. And every jurisdiction has to authorize by resolution its participation. If a jurisdiction does not do that, this pilot program will not go forward. And the state legislature will make its decision as to whether or not to embrace all-male ballot elections as some other states have, in part based on what happens here in San Mateo County. And so this really is an opportunity for us to help shape the future course of elections in the state. And I would just, excuse me, encourage all jurisdictions to participate in this program. That concludes our presentation, Mr. President, members of the board. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thanks, Officer Church. Do we have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Ms. Brizuela?
Yeah, so am I hearing correctly that everybody in San Mateo County, every jurisdiction, every school district or special election district has to participate in this or it won't go?
Every city, every school district, every special district that has a scheduled election for November of this year has to authorize by resolution its participation. And there are about thirty-eight jurisdictions, so we're busy making presentations. And there may be additional ones that authorize measures for the ballot, for the election. So that's correct.
And you can see on our website already, if you click on shakethefuture.org and go to this election, you'll see a running tab of all the districts that I've already signed on. We have about four cities and four school districts that I've already agreed.
So the, another question. I was a little concerned about the ballot box or the ability to vote ahead of time. One per city?
This is, this is part of the law. So this is how we've always done it, even in our traditional elections, is that we have one drop-off location in every city. What's beneficial about this style of an election is the postage is already paid on your ballot. So you don't have to go to one of our ballot drop-off locations. You can just drop it off in your mailbox.
Okay, that's not, I'm thinking about the people that really like to put it in that box. Just wondering why, I mean, can you have more?
Well, so we're going to have, we'll stay with our one ballot drop-off location in the city starting twenty-eight days before the election. But on election day, yes, we'll have more than one polling place in the areas that need it.
Okay, so you say for every city and for every city in the county, they get, they get a ballot box, right? So what about the many other districts in San Mateo County that are unincorporated and don't have?
So ballot boxes can have to be under the guard of an elections official by the law.
Oh, okay.
And so that's why we can only have twenty, because we only have twenty city clerks.
Okay, okay, that answers the question. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Church and Ms. Matt Hasselsher, if you wouldn't mind sending me the revised PowerPoint, we can upload that to our agenda for the public to view.
Monica will send it to you, but I'll resend it.
Send it, that'd be great. And then, thanks for the information that already eighty-five percent of our district voters are voting by mail. That's very helpful for our board to consider. And I'll work with Mr. Ali to schedule a time for our board to consider a resolution sometime before the end of June.
Yeah, eighty-six percent, remarkably high. Congratulations on that.
Thanks once again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number five, resolution number fifteen dash zero-five dash one-three, Classified Employees Week. The administration recommends adoption of resolution, of a resolution designating the week of May seventeenth through twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen as Classified Employees Week. And Mr. Vidalas, would you like to?
Yes, this is an annual resolution and we've gotten the dates for the two thousand and fifteen celebration week. And we ask that the board adopts the resolution so that staffs and schools can prepare.
All right, what types of activities do the sites do?
Different school sites do different activities, so, from lunches to breakfast to coffee to donuts, flowers. It depends on the school site.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve resolution fifteen oh five thirteen, Classified Employees Week, and that we designate the week of May seventeenth through the twenty-third as Classified Employees Week.
My second?
All right, roll call.
Mrs. Brizuela?
Aye.
Ms. Lia Inga Anawahi?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye. Unanimous? So we'll skip seven and eight?
Yeah, if we can move item seven and eight to right before the board policies, Dr. Douglas should be back by then.
All right. Do we have a motion to move items seven and eight to?
I motion to move items seven and eight to before the board policies.
Second motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Section two, item one, Acceptance of Donations. Would anyone like to read this? You want to read it?
I'll make a motion that we approve the donations at George Washington School and T.R. Policy School and also Woodrow Wilson, as listed in the agenda.
Second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's right here.
Yeah, exactly.
It's the most important thing. This is important right now.
Item two, the Big Lift Update and Resolution number fifteen dash zero-five dash thirteen B. The Big Lift Grant, Representatives from Jefferson Elementary School District's Big Lift Collaborative will present information on the Big Lift Grant the district recently received to enhance and expand preschool within the Daly City and Colma communities.
Good evening. I am here on behalf of the Big Lift Daly City Collaborative. Lisa Zamiga is here as well and Pat Bohm is part of the collaborative and she couldn't make it tonight, but...
No, she is, she's here.
I looked right over too. I apologize. She is here. So we're, the Big Lift is a grant that we received and I want to give you a little overview of what it is. It's a really exciting opportunity that has been presented to our district that we were able to participate in. This is a grant through the county of San Mateo through Measure A. It's also through Silicon Valley Community Foundation. They're kind of funneling the funding through the Social Innovation Fund, which is a federal grant. San Mateo County Office of Education is also part of this initiative. So to give you a little overview of what this is, it actually started as an initiative. So it's a countywide initiative focused on early learning and the goal is to increase reading proficiency of our third-grade students countywide from fifty-eight percent to eighty percent. And this initiative has four pillars. One pillar is school readiness, preschool through third-grade alignment. The next pillar is attendance and making sure that we support families in having their children come to school on a daily basis. Also, family engagement, engaging families in the community, and then inspiring summers. All of these pillars, we already are actually addressing in our L cap. The one that we're not really addressing, little graphic there, inspiring summers. We haven't really talked about inspiring summers. We've had summer school in the past, but they're talking about inspiring summers, where it's something that we are not just doing remedial, but we're engaging students in the summer program. We are actually building it into this year's L cap as a planning year so that we can build in some inspiring summers for our students. So the Big Lift, as I said, was a grant. It was a very competitive grant application process. There were eleven communities eligible and we were one of four communities selected. So we're really excited that we were part of that. This is not just Jefferson Elementary School District, it is a collaborative. Our co-lead agency with Daly City Peninsula Partnership, we're doing this together. And then Head Start, which is the Institute for Human and Social Development, and Peninsula Family Service has also applied for enhancing their preschool spaces through this collaborative. So our district received funds as well as Head Start and Peninsula Family Services and we applied for this grant together. And Daly City Peninsula Partnership has already been working with preschools in the community and so it made sense to co-lead with that organization as well. So how is it funded? As I said before, forty percent of our funding, and you can see how much we're getting there, almost eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to enhance our preschool. Forty percent of it is coming from the federal dollars, the Social Innovation Fund, and sixty percent of it is coming from the San Mateo County Measure A fund. And so there's some requirements with this funding. We do need to match some of that funding. Some of that matching is cash contribution, which could be salaries. I'm going to be required to attend lots of meetings, so some of it will be part of, you know, my salary. And then also half of the matching is in-kind. So they're going to be, we're using our facilities, so utilities, things like that, and staff time. So eight-hundred, nearly eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to enhance our preschool. So we're really excited about that. So what does it mean for us? We are enhancing our preschool spaces at General Pershing, one-hundred-and-sixty-eight spaces. The state has already given us additional funds, thanks to Lisa Zamiga and her very due diligence to get more funding for our preschool. So we've actually increased the number of classes at preschool in the last year. And then we'll be enhancing those spaces by, we're going to get more technology, some iPads in the classrooms, smaller class size and more staffing, more support. And then we're also, for the first time, going to be opening two full-day preschool spaces at two of our elementary sites. And so Thomas Edison will host one and John F. Kennedy will host the other. And so those will start in the fall. So we're really excited about these new programs to build that community schools and increasing preschool in our district. And as you can see, you know, we have about six hundred students in our district that come into kindergarten every year and we're getting almost a third of those in preschool, which is exciting. So, I mean, it's a very short presentation, but we do need a resolution. The Silicon Valley Community Foundation, in order to receive this grant, they want board resolution to say that you are accepting these grant dollars. Do you have any questions?
All right, thanks.
Or Lisa or Pat?
No questions, just congratulations, great job.
I did attend one of the meetings and it was really inspiring. We're really happy about it.
I have one question about the inspiring summers. What are we planning with that? What are we going to do?
We're in the planning stages. So we're planning right now. I don't have an answer to that yet.
Well, I'm asking because you mentioned not just summer school, but, I mean, does that include having a full summer school for those students?
That's what we're planning. We're trying to decide what it's going to look like, if it's, you know, having enrichment as well as support for students that need it. But we're, we're looking to see what the needs are and we want it to be exciting for students and engaging and for all students.
Right. And then also the money, is it only for pre-K and kindergarten or can we use it when they're in first, second, and third grade?
The initiative is preschool through third grade, but the focus right now is preschool. And so we want to enhance those preschool spaces, but some of the funds will, you know, we're hoping that this is not going to be a one-time, that they did say that there could be future funding towards us if we're in this grant. And so there could be more funding coming in for inspiring summers and other grade levels.
All right, sounds good.
Well, having been around, summer school used to be inspiring. At one time, we had that. And with money's the way it was, it sort of like got down to just those children that actually needed the extra help. So it'll be really nice to have something like this. I'm really, I'm excited about it, so.
We do have kinder readiness and we've expanded to, how do, what do we call it, kinder to first? Kickoff to first, thank you. So we actually, last year, just expanded because Lisa, Pat, and Jessica and I have actually been part of a professional learning community for preschool through third-grade initiative. So we've been kind of working on this for the last couple of years.
Which is great, yeah.
No questions, just thank you so much for this work. It's so important that we kickstart all our young thinkers and I love that we have the extra spaces available for them now. It's exciting. Thank you.
And I'd just like to thank, thank you, Jessica. Pat Bohm, Lisa Zamiga, Jessica Page, being part of this as well.
Been seeing you three in action, thank you. And I know Superintendent Vidalas, we have the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, I was just going to share that, you know, this, we were a community that was selected for this grant from among the seven who applied, not all eleven applied. But a lot of the reason, the major reason, I believe, our community was selected was because we exhibited the readiness and the capacity to take on this project. We understood the initiative, we understood its purposes. I've been a part of the Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council for the last five years, which has been meeting once a month on this initiative. And Ms. Zamiga and I have been part of subcommittees. I believe Ms. Anawahi is also part of some of the committee work. So the presence of district representatives in all of these initiatives, as well as the Bridges to Success, sets us up for being the first community to receive these preschool dollars. We hope that other funds will become available for some of the other pillars, specifically inspiring summers. There's so much we can do, but we do need the funding to be able to do this. So next year is a year of planning and wishing and hoping, getting us ready for the next RFP that we hope will include inspiring summers that we can apply.
And on the twenty-seventh, am I correct? Do we have that celebration coming up?
Yes, and I believe it's May twenty-seventh, nine o'clock in the morning over at Orange Memorial Park in the rec center there. There will be an opportunity to, another opportunity to kick off this, this initiative countywide.
All right, great. So do we have a motion to?
Yeah, I'd be very happy to make a motion to approve resolution fifteen dash oh-five dash one-thirty-eight, the Big Lift Grant. Hooray.
Second?
All the, actually, this is roll call.
Mrs. Brizuela?
Aye.
Ms. Lia Inga Anawahi?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye. Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item Business and Financial Procedures, item number seven, Replacement of Relocatable Classroom at Westlake School Bid Acceptance.
I have the bid sheet and I think that was not available at the time of publishing. We do have some bid sheets for the public, if anybody is interested. So, let's see. Yeah, so we did hold the bid opening. This is for the replacement of the relocatable classroom at Westlake School. This is for the replacement of the relocatable classroom at Westlake School. We opened them up last, on May seventh, last Thursday, and we are recommending the lowest bidder, interstate grading and paving be awarded the, the bid in the amount of a hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. They were the lowest responsible bidder.
Have you used them before?
I don't know.
Alright.
But they've been considered responsible, so somebody's used them and it worked out well.
Alright.
Well, if they're not, we won't use them again.
Yes, 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 yes. So there's no questions? Do we have a motion to accept?
I just had a question on timeline. When, when is the project to take place in the timeline?
So the project will start taking place probably within a couple of days after school is out. The current relocatable needs to be removed, and then the new one brought on, so.
So it will be in place before?
Oh, yes, the, the target date is August for completion.
Thank you.
So do we need any more information, or, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the, for the replacement of the relocatable classroom at Westlake School. Let's see, what's the name of the group here? Interstate grading and paving in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and ten dollars, and no cents.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Number nine, Board Resolution, number fifteen dash zero five dash thirteen A, Education Protection Account. And this is just an annual item. Do you want to give a brief explanation?
Um, yeah. What it is, is since Prop thirty passed, thirty, right? And we have those temporary taxes, the sales tax and the personal income tax on the higher earning individuals. Those funds, since they will be sunsetting, they go into a special reserve for education, that's Education Protection Account. And that's where we get some of our state aid money. So whatever we can get from that, we get from that, and then the rest from state aid. And the monies that we receive from that, we are restricted to how we can spend them. And so for instructional purposes, we can spend them, and so we say how we are spending them. And so one hundred percent of those funds will be spent on instructional purposes. They're spent for the classroom teachers' salaries and benefits.
So in the past, that's how it's been used?
Yes, every year.
Allocated towards salaries?
Yes, and we have to-
Is there anything else?
No. And we have to pass a resolution stating, or take board actions stating how we're spending these funds on a yearly basis.
Thank you.
In order to get the money.
Any other questions?
I'd like to motion that we pass the Board Resolution number one-five dash oh-five-one-three A, the Education Protection Account.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call.
Mrs. Brizuela?
Aye.
Ms. Lia Inga Anauai?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye. Unanimous?
We can't do the other thing. Because Greg's not here yet, so just-
So we'll move on to board policies.
We can do, we can do board policies, and maybe we can hear public comment on closed session, and then if Dr. Douglas is here, we can hear item seven and eight. Otherwise, we can postpone that to the next meeting.
Alright. So Board Policies and Administrative Regulations, August two thousand and fourteen, Board Policy Revisions, First Reading.
I did get one comment on this from Dr. Douglas, even though she's not here. She managed to send me a quick email right before the meeting. She did say that she would, if we could change one thing in AR six-one-seven-two B, item number six.
Say the number again.
Yeah, AR six-one-seven-two subsection, or page B. Item six. If we delete the words he/she, she thinks that would make it work better, so.
Does it say he now, you mean?
I don't know what is, it says he dash she now, but she is requesting that it would make sense if we deleted he dash she. I will look at that, and if I, seems like it makes sense, we will include that change for the second reading.
I didn't see anything. Aboludia, this is the shortest one we ever got. I didn't have any changes.
Well, we're gonna just accept the first reading of those revisions. So do we have any deliberation, any discussion?
No.
Alright.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the Board Policies and Administrative Regulations for the first reading, well, it says August two thousand and fourteen, Board Policy Revisions.
Yeah, that was the packet. We're, we're about nine months behind, so.
Yeah.
We're catching up.
We're catching up. Last year, okay, that's alright. Okay. So I did it for a first reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
I thought it might have been early. No.
Alright. So you want to skip to persons wishing to address the board?
Sure.
On closed item, closed session? We actually have extra time, I think, because people went under in their presentations.
Sign three minutes, but would you like to go two minutes?
Seven, there's eight.
Only eight people.
Well, that's not including Melinda, Doc.
Yeah.
So, that's including Melinda, so I'll say seven. Three times seven is twenty-one. Yeah, three minutes is wrong.
Two minutes or three minutes?
Three min, oh, you think three minutes is too much?
Up to you.
What is the total amount?
Yeah, that would get us out of here at nine.
We have time. You know what, they've been waiting for you a long time.
They might not take the whole three anyway. So persons wishing to address board on closed session item, and we'll start with Sarah Vogelstein, AFT Special Ed Teacher.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Vogelstein, and I'm a special education teacher at Thomas Polacita Middle School, where I've worked for the last four years. I love my job, and I love working with the amazing teachers and students of TRP and JESD. In order to ensure the best outcomes for not only our students with special needs, but for all of our students, we must do everything we can to hire and retain dedicated, experienced, and strong teachers. This means having competitive salaries at all levels, from beginning teachers, but especially for teachers who have worked in our district for many, many years. Additionally, there is a shortage of special education teachers in this county. JESD currently has two positions for special education teachers that are open that they cannot fill. These positions will likely be filled by hiring teachers contracted through outside agencies. As we heard earlier from the speech therapists who presented, hiring teachers in this way costs the district much more money than hiring teachers directly. Additionally, these teachers are hired on a short-term basis. They do not form the same type of relationships or commitments as teachers who are hired directly, and therefore their ability to positively impact our students is limited. In closing, we need more competitive salaries to attract more dedicated, strong teachers who desire to make a career in JESD. Thank you.
My name is Elaine Francisco. I teach pre-K special education at Westlake School. I'm also a Daly City resident of almost thirty years, and my two children actually attended this district from kindergarten through middle school. In addition, I also lead the Community Outreach Program of AFT thirty-two sixty-seven. My involvement in the outreach program gives me a unique insight as I listen and interact with Daly City families, students, and teachers as well during family ed nights. The Daly City community is bustling with new commercial establishments and is experiencing a change of demographics. Affluent families are moving to Daly City, and lower-middle-income families are being displaced because of high rental costs. Right now, our kindergarten population is shrinking district-wide. Tracy, Auntie Oak, Vallejo, and Will Hayward are now the housing choices of these young lower-to-middle-income families. We will soon find ourselves competing with multiple private schools as they start to spring up around us. Having said this, I am here to request the board to start planning for rainy days, not by stashing millions of dollars in the bank, but by spending part of those savings to attract and retain qualified teachers. I and many community members supported Measure I because we were informed it would save the district over three hundred thousand annually in electrical, in electrical costs. My question is, how is that savings going to be allocated? Will it go back, will it go back to the bank and sit in our rainy day account again? During negotiations, I often hear that the district will be bankrupt if we increase the salaries of our teachers. However, every single year, our history of expenditures is always below our income, and we end up having a surplus. I observe that there is no fear in hiring expensive admin support, but there is always fear in supporting teacher salaries. This is a trend within the district. Please be mindful, the teachers are our number-one resource, and it should be treated as, as an asset. You, our board members, should plan ahead to protect our assets and strive to be known as one of the best districts in our county. Please keep in mind that in the education business, efforts and resources are centered on students, should be centered on students and teachers. If we do this, everything else will follow and fall into place. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Vidalas and administration, to all the principals, and most especially the teachers. This is my son, Adam. He's a sixth grade at Ben Franklin. I have a younger son named Nathaniel, who's a second grader at M.H. Tobias, and just real quick, Ms. Horzano, he has done his homework. He's probably asleep.
He's still here.
So, or else I would have brought him. The reason why we're here is we're here to support the AFT negotiations. I am a public school product. My parents were in the military. I went through four elementary schools, two junior highs, and luckily only one high school. Names of Ms. Rogers, Ms. Dale, Ms. Mater, Ms., Mr. Oxenholt, Mr. Rudy, are just some of the teachers that I remember. That was a common thread that I had, and they inspired me to be where I'm at today. So I encourage during the negotiations that it's fair and equitable. I know in the tough times that we have, in trying to balance the budget. But I do want to say, my profession, I build major projects, and at the end of the day, I don't, we don't hire a company, we hire people. And when we hire people, we pay them fair. So I'm here to support the negotiations that it's positive and that is equitable for not only the teachers, but ultimately to our community and to our students. So my son would like to say a couple things.
I really think that you should look into paying the teachers more, because if you think about it, the teachers take away time from their own family so that they can work on the curriculum for us. And I think that's really important to think about, because without teachers, working on that and preparing every day, coming in at six o'clock in the morning, I think that would really, really affect how we learn and, I have a lot of my teachers here, Ms. Takla, Mr. Hagan, they're just really awesome, they're funny, they're always encouraging me, and even through the times I, when I'm not doing well, they always just tell me to do my best. And I think that I always get a positive outcome with this district.
Thanks.
My name is Brenda Wemis, and I am the mother of a fifth grader at Susan B. Anthony Elementary School. He is my second son to graduate from SBA. I have been a dedicated and active member of the PTA for almost nine years, and I have walked through the hallways, participated in events, attended meetings, and let me tell you all, these are the most hard-working and devoted teachers I have ever had the pleasure to meet. They go above and beyond the scope of their job because they're, they're passionate about what they do. They are such a caring group of individuals, from the principal down to the janitor, with one simple focus, the success of the children in their care. SBA throughout the years has become like my second family, and this is why I'm here tonight, to let you know how important it is to me that we keep our great teachers. Teachers have helped you save for rainy day. They took furloughs and received no raises for years while Jefferson School District's reserves grew. I'm hopeful that some of that reserve could be given back in maybe a good raise. It would show your appreciation for our teachers, and hopefully keep some of our good teachers a little bit longer. Keep in mind that the cost of living is going up in like rent, and our teachers deserve to be able to provide for themselves and their families. Even though it is my last year at SBA, I care for my teachers and the, and the continuity of the children. Thank you.
Akwisty.
Akwisty.
My name is Chris Akwisty, and I stand here not only as a product of JESD since kindergarten, but also as a teacher who has worked here for the last thirty-six years. I am passionate about teaching, and I share our district's vision as we transition into the common core and all the work that it entails. I want to thank you, to the board members past and present, and to the district for improving beginner teacher salary, which are now competitive in the county. Now, I ask you to do the same and increase the salaries of our teachers who have worked in our district sixteen years or longer, so we can at least meet the average of the county. As of now, we are the lowest paid in the county, and I ask you, where's the equity in that? During the past eight years, we took a total of ten furlough days resulting in a five percent decrease in our salary. We did receive an increase of six percent in two thousand and thirteen and five percent in two thousand and fourteen, but in doing the math, career JESD teachers, in some cases, received a raise totaling less than one percent. received a raise totaling less than one percent each year over eight years. Teachers who work beyond twenty-eight years are forever frozen at that step. We feel our teachers, who have chosen to stay loyal and dedicated to this district through the hard years, have continued to take on and have continued to take on more and more duties over time, we should be able to retire with dignity. We are asking that you increase the salary of teachers with sixteen years and longer of service so that our salary is competitive with the county average. Districts will be receiving more monies from the state when Governor Brown releases his budget revision on May fifteenth. With these additional monies coming to JESD, you will have the funding available so our salaries can increase. Thank you.
Barbara Barilay, teacher.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Barbara Barilay, and I have been teaching in the Jefferson School District for over twenty-six years. I represent not only myself, but many other teachers, some of whom could not physically be present this evening. We wish to express our concern regarding a few negotiable issues. Our first concern pertains to the fact that we are now one of the lowest-paid districts in the Bay Area. During the recession, we agreed in good faith to accept furlough days in each year for four years, resulting in yearly one-and-a-half percent pay cuts. We were told that if we didn't take these furlough days, our district would go broke. In reality, our district ended each of these furlough years with ending balances of fourteen to eighteen million dollars, thanks to employee generosity and consideration. In addition, our STIRS contributions will be increasing in the upcoming years in an attempt to rectify the recessionary shortfall. Increased salary deductions will result once again in a net pay decrease. When funds were tight and reserves dropped, our assistance was requested, and we accepted furlough days without hesitation. Now that we have a twenty to twenty-five million-dollar reserve, we expect that our prior sacrifices will be honored. We expect that we will be granted a well-deserved respectable increase over and above the furlough losses and the STIRS deductions. Another concern relates to increases that should be made in salary schedule steps and columns which haven't been adjusted in decades. We are encouraged and expected to be lifelong learners. Many of us have earned multiple credentials and have taken extensive training. The columns for postgraduate salary increments currently stop at seventy-five units. We'd like to see a ninety-unit column added. Also, at various benchmarks in our careers, our step increases are frozen for four years at a time. We understand that efforts are being made by you to rectify this situation. For those of you who are not aware of these freezes, step increases are frozen from step twelve until step sixteen years of service, from sixteen years until twenty years of service. At step twenty, we are frozen until twenty-four years of service. And at step twenty-four, we are frozen until twenty-eight years of service. At twenty-eight years, increases are terminated entirely, even though many teachers serve the district for thirty to forty years. By the way, step increases go up every year until the twelfth year, and then they start getting frozen, four years, frozen, four years, frozen. There's no justifiable reason for these freezes. Please make an effort to rectify this situation. Every year of service is equally important and in fact of increasing value. Seasoned teachers gain more and more experience and knowledge each year, which is of direct benefit to their students. They should be compensated for such with each year of service, rather than repeatedly being passed over for four years at a time. Our final concern relates to our constantly-increasing workload without compensation. Examples: To save the district money, we agreed to increases in class size. Computer tech positions at each site have been eliminated, leaving classroom teachers to assume that instruction. Throughout the years, teachers perform countless unpaid hours above and beyond their school day. When our school was painted, for example, it was expected that we would pack and unpack our classrooms, a job requiring many weeks of unreimbursed labor after school or during our summer vacations. Report cards also take many, many hours of preparation. Making sense of the Common Core state standards involves countless ongoing hours of weekly planning as we piece together our lesson plans using makeshift support materials from the reading and math departments along with teacher-created supplements. We have contributed hundreds collectively, hundreds of hours to phone banking and walking precincts to ensure passage of the Measure I Solar Initiative, which saved the district more than three hundred thousand dollars from general funds. This is one of many times that teachers have gone to bat and donated their hours to support education-related initiatives. In summary, our work demands are constantly increasing. The intrusion on our personal lives, including time spent working at home, becomes more and more consuming. Our contributions to Jefferson School District are numerous. We are overdue for a well-earned respectable salary increase and an improved salary schedule for teachers who have dedicated decades to Jefferson School District. Thank you.
Could we get a copy of that, all of us?
Yeah. Teresa LaHardy, teacher.
Good evening. My name is Teresa LaHardy, and I have been working for the district for more than twenty-five years. I know that we are in the education business, and that as a business, we need to look at numbers to be profitable. I don't know about the numbers, but would like to speak about what I do know: people. I know that... I know about the hard-working, dedicated teachers that are employed by our district. Many of these teachers taught my own children and have ensured both of them successful futures as my oldest is preparing to graduate with her master's from USF next week, and my youngest is a student at City College. I know how hard these teachers worked because I worked right alongside of them as a classified employee with the district. Working with these teachers inspired me to go back to school to obtain my teaching credential. I know the teachers that I previously worked with and the teachers that I currently work with are overworked and underpaid for the amount of hours they dedicate to their students. I know teachers who are disheartened with the profession and are leaving the school district because they are so disappointed with the way education is heading. I know teachers who are leaving our district because they cannot afford to live in the area on our salaries. I know teachers who are taking their time and experience in our district and are applying their skills in other districts where they are earning better wages and benefits. Most importantly, I know our students, who are our customers if we are talking about a business. Our students are loving and eager to learn all that we need to teach them. We need to have wages and benefits that are comparable to nearby districts so we are able to take care of our students, our customers. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Anouska Takla, teacher.
Good evening. My name is Anouska Takla, and I've been a teacher in the Jefferson Elementary School District for nineteen years now. I'm also a mother of three students in San Francisco Unified School District. And I reduced my speech because I thought I was going to have two minutes, so it'll be more concise. Anyway, I came to Jefferson Elementary School District because it was considered a great place to work with competitive salaries, and we were on the cutting edge of educational reform. When I started here, I worked with K-8 teachers and the Bay Area School Reform Consortium to write state standards, which we adopted for, I believe, only one year, and they were replaced by the state standards. But we were on the cutting edge. So, fast forward, beginning in 2008, we received no salary increase due to the economic downturn. On the recommendation of our district leadership, teachers were told that if we did not take furlough days, the district would have to cut teaching positions, increase class size in K through third grade, and possibly go bankrupt. So, given that teachers work with the best intentions, we agreed to keep jobs and programs for our community. From 2009 through 2013, we took ten furlough days, which resulted in a five percent decrease in salaries across the board. You're hearing it over and over again. It's our reality. During those same years, public records shows that our surplus grew annually by an average of about two-point-three million dollars. In 2008, our ending balance was slightly over ten million, and our current end balance is approximately twenty-three million dollars. So, throughout all those lean years, when we were taking cuts and being burdened by the increases in health premiums, the district was making money. Now, during this period of negotiations, we're asking the board to approve an additional increase for teachers in years sixteen through twenty-eight, which this is the one main outstanding item. Many of those professionals have volunteered countless hours to improving student achievement, and many of whom are your coaches who mentor the teachers in your district, our district as well. When we're told there's no money, I wonder... You know, one of our LCAP goals is to attract and retain quality teachers. We can't do this when our salaries, after ten years, fall to the bottom of nineteen school districts in our county. When we approve spending almost a quarter of a million dollars on document scanning, I ask, where are our priorities? That's roughly equivalent to a one percent increase. So, please consider giving more to the teachers who've really put in the time. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Thanks for all those comments. And just a reminder to everyone, we're here to listen to those comments, but we're not able to respond specifically to those comments. Also, I'd like to welcome Ms. Douglas to her seat.
My apologies for my tardiness.
Oh, no, no problem. So, now we will have a presentation, I believe, by Melinda Dart and other members of AFT.
Thank you, members of the board and everyone else. Thank you for coming. And I encourage everyone to stay through this. It will be as brief as we can make it. And I have a few comments, but perhaps I'll save them for after the presentation. I want to introduce to everyone Zev Kvitke from the California Federation. Who works with us in negotiations. And I want to acknowledge how tough negotiations are for you and for us too. But we do have a different outlook that we want to present that we don't think there's any other way to do so. So, take it away.
Thank you. And I've made copies for the members of the board. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Vidalis, members of the administration. So, just to kind of introduce this, because I don't want this to be taken the wrong way. This is not supposed to be beating up on anybody. I think actually, and we've said this in bargaining in another context, we think the recent offer that was made in negotiations would probably be a very reasonable one. But we want to explain why actually we don't think it is in the here and now, and there are very good reasons for that. So, in a sense, the history that we're speaking of and the picture that people have shared with you today and that we're going to portray through a brief presentation of district finances actually kind of seems to us like it's a victory of fear over hope, and we find that wrong for schools. So, I'm going to try and go through this briefly because you have it in front of you. Jefferson Elementary consistently carries a reserve that's at least ten times greater than the state requirement of three percent. We know that three percent is on the low side. Most districts would like to carry a larger reserve. But in recent years, the reserve has been forty percent, fifty percent. It's projected even in your budget to be at forty percent for this year. But if history has any indication, it will actually come out closer to fifty percent because this is a consistent pattern. You budget very conservatively. At the end of almost every year, for the last several that we look back, revenues outweigh expenditures, and you end up with a surplus at the end of the year. In dollar amounts, these are pretty staggering because last year, this actually approached half of your entire budget for the year that was in reserve, twenty-three million dollars. So, just to put this in context, and I'm not suggesting that you put this in your LCAP, but you could fly every student with a parent to London for a week, all expenses paid, to learn proper English with twenty-three million dollars. It's staggering. I'm not proposing that this end up in your LCAP. It's not the best way to use the money, but it's a staggering amount of money. These are the projections for the first and second interim. Twelve million over, eleven million over. They look a lot lower, but it's also because... Let me go back to this for a sec. So, they look a lot lower. I'll come back to this in a minute because they're actually much higher than this because of some of the funds that have been shifted into books and supplies and also into post-employment benefits. We don't want to downplay the importance of either of those. They're both extremely important. But the amounts of money that were shifted there are pretty staggering as well. We know that the state does not look well on large reserves, although with the passage of Proposition Two, there are actually limits now on how large the reserves can be kept by a district. These provisions probably aren't going to be triggered for many years. The point of this is that they've actually been looking at reserves, and from the state level, they don't believe it's appropriate to see some of the large reserves that districts have been maintaining. And they're not looking specifically here. They're looking all over the state. And the message was, they want that money to go into the classrooms, not into the bank. These are where the funds have gone. Fund Twenty is the special reserve fund for post-employment benefits. That's for retiree health. The state's made pretty clear that these function effectively as extensions of the general fund. These aren't the same as other benefit contributions. I believe that fifty percent of the total projected future liability was transferred into Fund Twenty. That's a tremendous amount. But that money is fluid. It's not restricted. It can be used for any general fund purpose, and the CDE has made that clear. So, if we include those funds in the interim balances, the numbers again pop up to what we've seen historically, nineteen, twenty million dollars in the first and second interim reports for this year. So, every year in bargaining, we hear about one-time funds. There's a surplus, but it's one-time funding. We can't spend that money for ongoing things: benefits, salary, staffing levels, can't be done. So, we've seen that every year. But in every year since 2008 except for one, those one-time funds were surpluses, and they got added to a growing surplus, and that surplus wasn't spent. So, we are no longer in agreement with the idea that these are one-time funds. We want to know how many years you have to have one-time funds before you call them revenue. Is it one year? Is it two years? Is it three years? Is it six years? This is six years' growth in ending fund balance in this district. This is a tremendous amount of money. And for us, it makes it very hard to believe in one-time funds. For us, this says, there's roughly two million dollars a year the district could be putting in the classrooms that you're not. And I think what's troubling for a lot of us is this actually goes right through the entire period of time that teachers talked about the cuts that they've endured: the furlough days, cuts in staffing. Starting in 2008, you could have spent another two million dollars a year. Some of those cuts probably wouldn't have been necessary, and you'd still have a ten-million-dollar reserve, which is well over the three percent that's required. So, we see a problem with this, and it's an enviable problem, the problem of having too much money. This is a problem many districts would love to have. But for us, it actually is a bit of a problem, not because there's this much money, because it's not being spent in the classrooms where it's needed. And I want to just say very briefly, one of the things we've heard And I want to just say very briefly, one of the things we've heard is we need to save money for things like books. There's actually a growing amount of money that's set aside for books, but there's now a separate fund. So Fund 17 is now designated for district textbook adoption, and there's $10 million set aside for textbooks. So this is huge. I'm not saying it isn't necessary. It's $1,600 per student that's set aside for textbooks. So we don't think that's going to be a valid argument for where some of that other money ought to go. So we want to say this to you because we think this picture is really the one that alarms us. It's very hard to hear always in negotiations that these are one-time funds, they can't be spent, we're going to go bankrupt, and see this picture kind of improve year after year after year after year. It's very hard for us to do. I think if we were competing with another priority of the district, if we were competing with other staffing or other programs that were very valuable to parents, to students, to the community, we would have a discussion about what the best expenditure of this money was. But the truth is, at the moment, I don't think we're competing with anything. I think we're competing with fear that the economic picture will change and that money will go away. And we can never win an argument with fear, except to speak to hope, because we don't think that's the economic picture of the future for the state or for this district. We think it's time for this to stop looking like an investment portfolio and start looking like an investment in our classrooms. So with that, I'm going to turn my cap over to Melinda.
So thank you for listening to our presentation, and I want to just say a few things. I understand that it can be seen as self-serving on my own part to be fighting for a higher increase for teachers who have been in the district for a long time, because I'm one of those teachers. But I do want everyone to know that I don't, the negotiating team doesn't craft a proposal based on what we ourselves would like, but we do collect surveys, and I've got a stack of surveys, usually in the back of my car, but sometimes they're on my dining room table and sometimes they're at school, at JFK or TRP or wherever I am. But these surveys say that this is what the members wanted us to fight for this year, better salaries for teachers who have been here a while. I think you heard that years ago, teachers took a lesser increase, and this is a long time ago, in order to make beginning teacher salaries better, and those do come out better when you look at the county. And the other reason we're fighting for salaries for teachers who have been here a long time is actually for young teachers. That may seem strange, but just the other day, all of us were young teachers. And the young teachers here, if they stay long enough, will become, whether they believe it or not, seasoned, let's call it seasoned, teachers. And let's hope that they do stay, because we want them to stay after giving them training and after them spending their time here, learning their craft and developing ties to the community, as so many of them do, as you heard from some of the families here. And we do appreciate that we've been offered this year extra hours and extra days, and I mean it about that. We do appreciate especially a prep day before school starts that is strictly our own. And I know I've been talking for years about the amount of time that teachers spend in the summer before school starts, so that's a good beginning. But I do have to say that ultimately, we teachers are not hourly employees. As you heard even from the young student who was so eloquent, teachers already come early and stay late and work on the weekends regardless of what the contract says. So adding extra time and extra work isn't really what's needed here. What's needed here is a living wage. So don't let fear hold our district back. Please help us to allow new teachers to build a career in our district and help us create the district we all envision, vibrant, where the best and the brightest want to stay and work and commit themselves, and where those who have given many years can retire with dignity.
Thanks, Ms. Dart, for that presentation, and thanks to all the members of AFT 3267. We're listening, and we will, you know, be going into closed session shortly, but I actually wanted to ask Mr. Vidalis, do we have any information on teacher retention data in our district? And also, could you talk a little bit about how the funds were accumulated or how they, you know, yeah, how we got to this situation with those funds?
So fortunately, we have agenda online that outlines every single resignation that we receive since 2008. So I did a little bit of homework, because, you know, that statement that teachers resign and leave our district is a bothersome statement, which I'm not sure is fully supported by the data. So since 2008, which is seven years, we've had 36 resignations. It's equivalent to five or six resignations a year. When we break it down by years of employment, which I did, we find that approximately three resignations a year are from employees with one to five years in our district, one to two resignations a year are from employees between six and 10 years in our district, one resignation every other year is from an employee with 11 to 15 years in the district, and we could probably expect about one or two resignations from an employee with 16 or more years about once a decade, just based on the data from the last seven years. So some of these resignations immediately followed a personal or medical leave that the employee was experiencing. Others, because they were relocating to another region of the state or the country. Fewer resigned to take a teaching position that I know in another Bay Area community, and others resigned because they recognized they were not a fit for the teaching profession. This is an expected amount, especially for someone in an early career phase. It happens in every career. Our teacher retention rate, when I calculated it, for the first five years is very close to the California average and is much better than the national average. So that was a little bit of what I was able to glean from that data. I don't know all of the backstories, but I know that we've only had 36 resignations in seven years. As far as reserve funds accumulation, I know that I've expressed this to the board several times. I'm not sure that the public is quite aware, but the reserve fund did grow, you know, as was expressed, between 2008 and 2013, 14. But the story behind the growth of the reserve fund is not really told with bar graphs or with charts and tables. I'd like to provide a little bit of that story for the board again. In 2008 or '09, the state provided the district's flexibility with categorical funds. So $3.5 million came from utilizing flexibility in the state categorical funds. $4 million came from the flexibility that was given districts to sweep and fund balances in all of these categorical funds. So we had some funds that had like $100,000 in there. We couldn't really do anything that we were supposed to do in that category, because it wasn't enough to do, to build any kind of program. So accumulating all of these 42 different categories that we had all into one, we were able to sweep about $4 million. So that's $7.5 million. So at the same time, the board determined that we needed to make some short-term ongoing cuts, about $750,000 a year in positions that were cut in around 2009. That accumulated over the next four years about $3 million in savings. All of those positions have been reinstated as of last year's LCAP, or if not, this next year's LCAP will reinstate all those positions that were cut. At the same time, too, the federal government, very aware that this was what is now being called by all economists as the Great Recession, second only to the Great Depression, the federal government instituted a couple of programs. First was the American Reinvestment Rehabilitation Act, which we call ARA. Then second was state fiscal stabilization funds, which we sometimes call SFSF. These provided the district an opportunity to fund programs and services without impacting the general fund. So we were, because of the purposes of those programs, were very much in line with some purposes we had in the general fund, we shifted funding those programs to the ARA and the SFSF. In addition, some of the new expenditures that we did were professional development for teachers and also increasing our health contributions for our staff. So that in total at the end saved us about $1.5 million that we were able to shift in expenses. So all of these were short-term funds, and they were accumulated mostly due to the additional federal stimulus and the flexibility allowed. There was no sinister motivation behind this accumulation, rather a judicious and conservative use of short or one-time funding. I was thinking about this, and how do we make this clear for the board to understand? I was thinking personally, I can, I sometimes get, I never have gotten, but I wish I'd get like a $200 gift card to Trader Joe's. In that month, I would very likely use that gift card instead of my own checking account to pay for those groceries. The next month, I might get a $200 gift card for Costco. The same thing, I will use that gift card before I use the funds in my checking account, and I may get another $200 gift card the following month. So at the end of four months, I've saved, you know, $800 from one-time funds, because that's what they were, one-time funds. I, would not be wise for me to go out and purchase a car that will require me to make a $200 payment every month, because those funds that were received consistently for the last four or five months were one-time. I wouldn't go out and make that kind of a down payment or that kind of commitment for $200 ongoing. I don't know if that $200 will come again next month. So maybe it's fear, maybe it's practicality, I don't know. So what the reserves did for us, and I think that our community appreciates, is that it allowed us to respond to threatened cuts in a way that was safe, that we didn't have to predict or act on. We didn't have to make any cuts in those years that we got those trigger cuts mid-year. We were able to say, let's hold off, let's see if they come to play, and if they do, we can respond to those. We didn't have to make the $2 million cuts that a failure of Proposition 30 would have made us do. We said, no, we've got the reserves, let's not make those cuts now. We'll make those cuts in February when Proposition 30 comes into, doesn't pass, and then we'll make them over a period of four or five years to respond to that. So it allows us to do that. We stayed afloat in those years when over a third of our payments came in the summer after we've spent it. We were able to set aside reserve funds for the post-employee obligations and also for our future textbook purchases. We haven't made a textbook purchase since 2010. Those cost between $1.5 million and $2 million apiece. We do expect that they will come back, the cycle will start back up in the next few years, and we've set aside funds for a full cycle of purchase, so we don't have to find them when we need them, when we need the new math program or new language arts program. So currently, what these funds are allowing the district to do, and the board has acknowledged doing, is pre-funding some student services and programs, setting aside funds to say, we are going to pay for more counselors, we're going to pay for more nurses, we're going to pay for gift schools, intervention funds, so that they can provide services, so they can hire their students, support resource teachers, we're going to have more coaches. We've set aside, we've pre-funded those expenses and activities with these reserve funds. The state's budget will not catch up to them for another, catch up to that expense for probably another three or four years. So yes, I do believe that we will probably experience some strategic use of those reserve funds. But another thing that comes into play here that's not always shown in a graph like that is that many times, and maybe even this year, the budgets come out and we receive these funds in the last month of the budget year. And we have to acknowledge that we received them in June, but we can't spend it until the following year. So we've gotten Common Core State Standards Implementation Funds twice to the tune of $2.5 million. This year, there's talk of other one-time funds given to school districts. Again, they're going, we're going to get it in June. We didn't know about it, we couldn't plan for it, so at the end of the year, it's going to look like, oh, you have revenues that you didn't spend. Well, we didn't know we had those revenues. Otherwise, we would have planned for it, so we'll plan for it in the following years. So, you know, I think it's troublesome to hear that some believe that we have the lowest teacher salaries in the county. That's not true. I will be happy to provide data to our negotiating team to display otherwise. We're doing very well. We're very close to median in all of the different categories, if not above. So, and I think the most recent offer that's on the table gets us way above median.
All right. Ms. Douglas, you...
You know, I...
If you have any questions.
Question?
It's not on the agenda.
No question.
This is our question.
No.
Did you talk about it in close session? But it's not agenda item.
Okay. So we can move on to adding seven and eight that we postponed.
All right.
What is the question? Yeah, the board... Yes. Are we not going to wait until we have all five members of the board present to do that?
Lots of discussion for you guys to have.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Where exactly am I?
So item seven is the Governance Handbook. There was a comment wondering if we're going to wait for all five board members. That was the intent of the board. I just wanted to double-check. Mr. Otydi will be gone for at least one other meeting. It may be worthwhile to adopt it now, discuss it, and then maybe during another session, have a discussion on what's in the Governance Handbook as a separate thing. There are some things that we're waiting for, such as revising meeting guidelines and such, that we're waiting for a board adoption of the handbook.
I think one reason why I would be in favor of us voting on it now is because there's one item in there that we're supposed to be implementing that we haven't been able to implement, which is at the end of our meeting, self-evaluation of our boardsmanship and meeting guidelines. So we can't even put that on until we vote on this.
I like to wait to vote on this.
We have been waiting. We've already put it off. This is, would be the third time.
I didn't put it off.
We did as a board.
Well, but, okay, I'm just saying, I'm not ready to vote for it tonight.
All right, what are your reasons?
I don't want to discuss it right now. I'm not feeling good.
All right, well, does anyone else want to deliberate this?
I don't want to deliberate.
You said you don't want to discuss it, so does anyone else want to discuss it?
Excuse me? Can I finish my sentence?
You said you didn't want to discuss it.
I said, because I'm not feeling well right now, and I don't want to stay any longer than we have to. I think the important item right now is get to our close session.
All right. Anyone else want to discuss this?
Does it in fact need deliberation? I mean, we beat this out in our governance meeting.
And some things that I talked, that I looked for did not show up in this.
So you do feel it does need further discussion?
Yes, I do.
And you do not, you do not feel up to doing that, which I can certainly understand.
Well, I don't agree with that, so do you have an opinion on it?
I mean, I personally would be willing to, but I also think that if we have a board member who is clearly sick and does not want to, you know, I think we need to respect that.
I'm sorry, I'm sitting here choking here. I'm sorry.
Do we need to take a recess?
No, let's get to, let's get to what we're here for right now.
We're here for everything that's on the agenda.
I know, but we put that aside because Rebecca was not here. We wanted to wait. Okay, now let's get on to the rest that's on the agenda, so I can go home.
Well, I would like to say that I, too, would have wanted that we get, that we move forward with it, but I do agree that if there are still some concerns by anyone here on the board, with all due respect, that we delay it because of that. I think it's important that we hammer out every concern and then move forward from that in full agreement.
All right. Well, I'd like to hear what the concerns are, if we're going to put it off again. This would be the third time.
Second time.
A second time.
Want to just end the meeting now?
No.
Okay, I'm not going to discuss anything else right now.
Wow.
Please, if you want to vote on it, vote on it.
Excuse me, this is not boardsmanship.
It's also, I've asked you guys, can we just get the last item done?
No, we can't just get anything. We have to work. We're here to work, not to just...
Okay, then do it.
Then do what?
Do whatever you guys want.
All right, I'd like to take a five-minute break.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nay. Item number eight, summer board meeting schedule.
So I thought we'd bring this to the board to begin a discussion on this. For sure, I know that administration and staff are not able to prepare an agenda for the stated dates for July, vacation and other activities. So my recommendation is that we have one board meeting in July. It could be July 29th, which is a fifth Wednesday, we don't often get those, or the third Wednesday in July, which I believe is July 18th.
The 15th?
The 15th?
So you're saying the 15th or the 29th?
Yeah, 15th or the 29th, yes.
I'm going to be gone on the, on the, it's either 15th or 16th on the tourist day, all the way through the 30th.
I will definitely be present on the 29th, I couldn't make any guarantees about the 15th.
Yeah, same, same as I.
Can we, can we do that on the 8th?
No, we can't do it on the 8th. Agenda preparation would happen during a holiday week and staff's not available to get it prepared and distributed.
So the whole staff?
The important ones, myself. Myself and Ms. Kovarai.
Well, we definitely can't do it without Ms. Kovarai.
Yeah.
Do you know...
I'll be out of town.
You'll be out of town both of those potential dates, yeah.
I'm going to see him.
Yeah, I was actually going to ask Shaquille if he knows, you know, what your July schedule looks like.
I just conform to whatever we need to do.
Just conform to whatever. Well, it sounds like we could get a quorum on the 29th to take care of basic business if Shaquille is willing to conform, conform and...
Can we have, can we meet on the 14th or just move our day? Another day? Instead of doing it on the, I will know soon whether it's the 15th or 16th, it depends on the plane.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I'm going to be available in the middle of the month, and I think that's...
Yeah, I'm of your concern, too.
I just know that I have to be back, I have to be in town on the 28th, so I can certainly plan on being in town on the 29th, so that one was a safe bet for me.
Although I can't be there.
Yeah.
So should we just cancel one meeting? Is this what it sounds like?
Well, we would cancel the two meetings in July, the one set for the 8th and the 22nd. And, you know, our board policy does allow us to have one meeting in the summer months, so we could have just our August meetings, not have a meeting in July at all. Now, the July meeting typically is, is, you know, affirming some of the contracts related to the LCAP, some of the special education contracts. That's usually what the July meetings have been the last couple of years.
It seems like that's one that, really what we need is a quorum, it's not, there's not, if we don't schedule anything that's in need of debating, just business that needs to be taken care of, if we can count on having a quorum, that seems like the key thing. So I would suggest that we at least tentatively nail down the 28th.
29th.
Or 29th, rather, sorry. Can you tentatively nail something down? It's been a long week. Just to have that on our agendas at least, so that if there's business that does have to be done, we can plan to be there and do it.
So when are you, when are you coming back? When are you going to be gone?
Well, that's what I'm not really sure about, except the middle of July is basically the time that my husband has available for flexibility for being gone, so that's, I don't want to have to say, well, sorry, no vacation, dear, because I've got a meeting in the middle of the month.
If there's no critical businesses being done, I'm not against canceling both meetings in July. It is possible to get together a special meeting if we had to, correct?
Correct.
All right.
And maybe that's what, I mean, what we should do, it sounds like you know when you could have one if you have to have one.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can cancel the two in July. If there needs to be one, I will contact board members and see which date I can get a quorum, and we'll keep the two in August.
Okay.
So do we need to...
Probably a motion and a vote would be good, because we did approve the calendar back in December.
So I would make a motion that we cancel both of the July board meetings.
And I can let you know if we're not, if we're not leaving on the plane until the 16th, then we could have the meeting on the 5th.
Depending on how many others.
Well, I know.
Yeah, Ms. Rizella, you can, you can let me know. Yeah, and just in case there needs to be a special meeting, then it's nice to know when we can have three or four.
I have to be there, he's having surgery on the 17th.
Okay. So...
Okay, so we have a motion for, to cancel the July meetings?
I'll second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay.
So at this time, we will, we're not closing in memory of anyone, correct?
For the first time in a while.
Long time, unless you know of any, anyone.
I'll wait till next...
All right. So we'll, at this time, convene to close session at 9:31.